Evening, everybody. We'll call the meeting to order now. This is the reorganization meeting, again, which will happen first and then we'll move into the regular board meeting. Please all rise for the place of flag.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. For roll call, we'll note that we're missing Mrs. Grimm tonight. She was going to attempt to call in, but we have not been able to get in touch with her. So if she calls later, we'll make an amendment, but I think we're going to move through this fairly quickly. So I'll hand it off to Mark Davis for an explanation of the reorg meeting.
Okay. Again, we're transitioning. The who will shortly be, and may be reelected, I don't know, but the president of the board as it exists at this moment has called this meeting to order. What we're doing here tonight and why we're having a separate meeting, or what's called the reorganization meeting, it's not a Potts Grove issue by itself. It's an issue that's mandated by the Pennsylvania school code that all school districts and there are classes of school districts, but it doesn't matter which class you are, we are required by law to reorganize the first week in December. Potts Grove has traditionally picked the first Tuesday because Tuesday's our meeting night. What's going to happen is, in a minute, I'm going to ask that we elect a temporary president. I'm going to change the order slightly. I think it would make more sense at this point to elect a temporary president and then take a public comment. So we have someone at that point formally chairing the meeting. After election of the temporary president, we will ask for the new board members to take their oath of office. I'm going to suggest that we do that separately. I don't know if folks have family or someone here to hold the Bible for them. Whoever the temporary president is, if they have not already taken the oath of office, which you could have done on your own at a district judge or somewhere like that, I have not heard that anyone has. The school code does authorize the temporary president to give the oath of office, which I have here. So I'd ask that at a certain point that the two new board members that need to take the oath of office come forward and will swear you in separately. When we get actually to the nomination for board seats, nobody ever listens to me, so we'll probably muck it up, which is fine. It won't cause any harm. But under Robert's rules, we will have nominations. A nomination does not require a second, and that's where it seems like I always don't get my point across. After we hear no more nominations at a certain point, the temporary chair, at least for the office of president, will ask for motion to close nominations. We will ask for a second on that. We will first vote on closing the nominations. It gets a little awkward. And then we'll go back and we'll have a voice vote on the officers that are nominated. If, and Mr. Nestor usually takes our role, if he can't distinguish who voted for who, then we'll do it by roll call. People are frequently calling for roll call votes, and really, the school code talks about recorded votes. So what that means to me is, as long as Dave can record the votes, all right. If he can't, then we'll call the roll one by one. With that said, and we can do it in any order, well, the way we have it on here, I'll go back to the agenda as it's stated here or placed on the board. Let me first take any public comment, and please, your public comment should now be limited to the organization meeting. When we go into the regular agenda, we'll open that for public comment again. I think that, as I understand it from our former president, soon-to-be former president, John Rossi has asked to speak during the reorganization meeting. John, do you have a public comment? And let me remind everyone, we normally limit public comment to three or four minutes. I don't like to cut people off, but we'd ask you to confine your comments to that period of time.
Thank you. Good evening. As a former board member, I know how this meeting's important, and I just want to thank, first of all, Diane Charico for all the years you've put on the board. Most people don't know, it's just not sitting up here for you. There's a lot that you have done over the years, a lot of time after the meetings, before the meetings, and when you were not even here, when you were at home. So I want to thank you again, and I want to thank Anthony for letting us have you all those times. So Anthony, gas the car up, because there's going to be a lot of trips to Pittsburgh. So I want to thank, Mr. Lindgren, congratulations. I was very happy when you took my spot. I thought that was great, a great fit, and thank you, you know, for running again and staying on the board. I don't know Mr. Huff, but congratulations. Scott, wherever, where did he disappear to? Congratulations. I think you're going to enjoy it. Mr. Nipper, congratulations, and I just hope that everybody keeps their vision as the future. The past is gone. The past is behind us. We can't change it. We can't fix it. We're about the future, and the future is these kids from kindergarten to high school. That's the future. They're the future. We have to, as a board, we have to give the educators and the students the tools to become our future. And if we can remember that as board members, and the current board members that are sitting in that didn't have to run for election, and I think we have a good makeup, and I just hope that we can go forward in leaps and bounds that we have done in the last four to five years, I hope we keep it going. And I just want to say thank you to everybody who's volunteered their time to the board, the administration, and the educators that do all this for our students. Thank you.
Rick, we have a slip from you, but I understand you want to speak during the regular meeting. You out there somewhere?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anybody else that wants to speak to reorganization? Again, we're just going to elect officers and do some annual appointments during this section of the meeting or the reorganization meeting. Okay, seeing no other comment, what I have for then is a motion for someone to chair the election process. Do I have a nomination?
I'll nominate Mr. Lindgren.
Any other nominations? Can I then suggest that we, and this is only for our temporary chair, and I'm not trying to demean that position, but I want to make it clear what we're electing. Can we do that by acclamation, folks? Everybody seems to be nodding their head. Dave, so why don't we have the minutes recorded by acclamation? Bob is now going to run the organizational meeting. Bob, you can either come over here or just do it from there.
Thank you for your trust and confidence. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Huff to come up.
Right here, you know, you do it the way you want to do something, swear, state your name, and I will support, obey, and defend, and maybe take applause, you know, so they can...
Oh, yeah. I've had to do this any number of times. I'm going to do this. I'll move forward. That's probably the better thing to do. Repeat after me, it's fairly easy. Now, would you rather swear or oppose? Okay. I, state your name.
I, Scott Huff.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office faithfully.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office faithfully.
Very good. Congratulations. Mr. Nipper. That I will support, obey, and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the Commonwealth. And that I will discharge the duties of my office. With fidelity. Congratulations. Well, good work. Okay, at this time, we'll be moving to look for nominations for the president of the school board for the next year.
I nominate Matt Alexander.
We have a nomination for Matt Alexander. Hearing no other, is there a motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the nominations. May we please vote on that? All those in favor of closing the nominations, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So moved without, with acclamation. All right. So now we have the opportunity to vote on the actual president. So all those in favor of voting for Mr. Alexander for president of the board for the next year, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Congratulations, you've won another year. So now we move to the vice president. May I hear motions for vice president?
Nominate Bob Lindgren.
Are there any other nominations for vice president? Hearing none, a motion to close nominations would be in order. Motion and a second. All those in favor of closing the nominations, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. All right. Now, let me know if you're going to give me all this work. I think it's the same as the United States, right? It's just the one spit? Yeah. All those, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Thank you very much. All right. Now we move on to board secretary. These, we have a couple of these to go through. These are normal positions. The board secretary was held by Diane. Thank you very much for that, and congratulations on relinquishing it. And the term for this is what? Is this two-year?
This spot is open, not because this normally takes place during reorganization, but this is a July 1 election, and it's every four years from 1957. So it's become too hard for me to count that on my fingers. Laurie or Bill, do we know when Diane's term would have ended? We're filling that term.
30th, 2021.
Thank you. I knew you would know. So it's to fill Diane's term through June of 2021. Laurie, thank you.
Okay, very good. So I'll accept at this time motions for nomination for the board secretary.
I nominate Ashley Custer.
Hearing no other nominations, a motion to close nominations would be in order.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to close nominations. All those in favor of closing nominations signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Very good. Everybody who would like to vote for Ashley for board secretary, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Congratulations. The next one is for a position on the Western Montgomery Career and Technology Center Joint Operating Committee. That's a three-year term. So we're looking for, what's that? We're looking for a nomination for representative out of the district to serve on the job.
I'll nominate Patty Grimm.
Can I, how many positions are there? Because, just the one.
There's three people, and they go three years. That's obviously a golden stagger.
Okay, all right. So, okay. Gotcha. Gotcha.
Okay, hearing no other nominations, a motion to close the nominations would be in order. Motion and a second. All those in favor of closing the nominations for member of the joint operating committee, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Thank you very much. All right. All those in favor of Patty Grimm for our representative to the joint operating committee, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. By unanimous acclaim, Patty is now, and again, a member of the board. The next position is the MCIU board member, previously held by Mrs. Charico. Three-year term ends June the 10th on 2018. We'll need to open, need to elect someone to fill this open slate, and then we'll have another election in June. So motions for MCIU board member, nominations rather.
I'll nominate Scott Hutt.
Motion to close will probably be in order before he changes his mind. So moved, okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of closing the nominations, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All those in favor of Scott Hutt being our new representative at the MCIU, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed? Congratulations.
Let me suggest that the next two really are not elections, and I would suggest that when Matt make his recommendation for committee appointments, he include those two spots. That's okay with everybody?
Can I, can I have a minute?
You're doing that in the night or next meeting.
Okay, so my plan would be that for the positions that aren't required to be elected tonight, that we, again, this year, like we did last year, take the time to, for everybody to consider what they'd like to do, if they want to stay where they are, move to other things. We do need to fill this recreation board spot to have school board representation there, so please consider that. We can take the time to get the details on what the committees are, and I'll send some, I'll send information out, or maybe through Dr. Shirk, what the committees are, what the roles are, and the rec board as well, and what the commitment is. So if that is okay with everybody, instead of making decisions tonight before everybody had a chance to voice opinions, that's what I'd like to do.
Seeing no objections, and that being pretty much the rest of the agenda, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Very good. Do we have a second? We have motion and a second. All those in favor of adjourning the reorganization board and starting with regular business, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to call the regular school board meeting. To order, sorry. I'm going to call the regular school board meeting to order now. We won't rise for the pledge, and the roll call is still the same. So we will... Oh, yeah. Thanks, Bill. The roll call is not the same. Welcome, Scott and Chuck, even though we welcomed you at the last meeting. They're quiet over there. We do not have any executive session announcements tonight, so I will head right into public comment, and I know we have Mr. Rabenowitz for public comment tonight. Rick?
Long time no see, everybody. I promise, it is not my intention to come and give public comment at your board meetings. My plan is to fade back into Tuesday night and maybe follow the lead of Fred Rabelius and have Chinese food on Tuesday nights. So I'm not saying I won't come to meetings if there's an issue that is of interest to me, but I assure you, this is not my intention. That said, I did attend the curriculum meeting on Tuesday night, and I had some thoughts that I wanted to share about a matter that is likely to come before this board in January pertaining to the addition of a new course, actually, two new courses, AP Capstone. So I just want to first say that I was incredibly enthused that Pots Grove High School has, is seeking to add Capstone to our AP offerings. The course has a lot of very positive components to it, and it was personally of interest because I thought it might be a possible 12th grade course for my own son in, at a time when there, I don't think there was likely to be one. That said, having learned about it, because I've spent a lot of time researching Capstone, it's not a fit for my son, but it is a fit for a lot of our parents' sons and daughters. So I had some thoughts that I wanted to share about Capstone, and I'll do my best to keep this brief. But I am going to start by reading a article, a segment of an article, it's just a paragraph from the New York Times. I don't have the date here. I'll get that later. "One of the most significant instructional shifts in these standards," it's talking about the Common Core standards, "is the demand that schools teach more nonfiction or informational text across subject areas." Because most of what students will read in college and in the workplace is not fiction, but texts that are informational in structure. The standards say that by fourth grade, half of what students read should be informational text, while by 12th grade, students should be reading nonfiction 70% of the time. And it says, "Most of what we read as adults and as higher ed students is nonfiction." But I found another source that said 90% of what we read in the real world, pardon my French, is informational, nonfiction, not fiction or literature.
There's a difference between informational and nonfiction.
And there's a difference, yes, and there's a difference between fiction and literature too. So let's not forget that. So the current plan, which will be presented to you and will be part of the committee report from the curriculum, is to make Capstone an elective course, which would be available to students who seek it as an elective, an elective course under the ELA banner, but a core course for students who take an advanced AP track. If they take AP comp, first, AP English, second, then the Capstone course or courses, because it's two courses over two years, could be core English courses. There was a lot of discussion at the committee meeting. I'm not going to rehash the discussion, although I would like to talk to all the board members that I haven't spoken to about this subject between now and January. Our, the school district to the east, our friends at Springford are one of the only schools in the state, or at least in the local area, that are, that have decided and gotten approval from the state to make Capstone a core English course, not an elective, as, which is the road that we seem to be going down. Because my wife is a ninth grade, in the ninth center at Springford, and the course is offered in the 10 through 12, since they have two buildings for high school, she's, and she's the gifted teacher, and she's also an English Language Arts teacher, she's one of the key people to make recommendations as to who should take this core course. And what, what happened last year when they offered the course is they had 80 kids sign up for it for 50 slots. And a large percentage of those kids are not, were not what you would consider ELA kids. They were not honors ELA kids. They were, they were math and science kids who don't want to take AP Lit, don't want to take AP comp, but do have strong writing skills, strong research skills, and research is one of the key components of Capstone, strong collaborative, collaborative skills, at least in some cases, and strong presentation skills, which are the components for success in the AP Capstone course, which is a very challenging curriculum that involves a high amount of nonfiction reading, research, and, and writing. So I think I'm just about ready to stop there, except to say that, that while students who might take a Capstone course as in lieu of our standard English Language Arts offerings might miss out on some literature education, it would be replaced by the nonfiction education that is of most interest to them, and frankly, most useful to them in the real world that they're going to be in, in a very short period of time. Now, I had this crazy idea, and I admit it's crazy, because when we were talking about this at the curriculum meeting, the, there was a lot of discussion about what we teach in terms of literature in the high school in 9 through 12. And having had a son who took the advanced English course in eighth grade in our middle school, all the elements that were talked about in our high school are taught at a very advanced level to the eighth graders who take that course. And this year, as I understand it, there are over 30 kids taking that class. So it's not an insignificant number of kids who are taking a very advanced ELA course in eighth grade. I met with Daniel, I asked him, and he didn't know the answer, and I don't expect that he still does, but it occurred to me that we could give core English credit, high school credit, to the eighth graders who take that course, if it's legal. And I don't know if it is. But, but that course is definitely at an extremely advanced level. And if you did that, you could then split those kids off into two groups, or maybe three groups. Group one would be your strong ELA kids, and it's my recommendation to this administration and to this board that we be bold about our Language Arts offering. And we have the strong ELA kids going right to AP comp in ninth grade, AP English in 10th grade, and Capstone in 11th and 12th, if they choose to continue, for core credit in Language Arts. And if it's, if the eighth grade course is core, then they don't have to take the 12th grade, but they're going to want to, because you get a special diploma with taking Capstone. It's a very prestigious thing. And everybody needs the research skills if they're going on to higher education, whether they're, whether they're math-science kids or ELA kids. And then the second component would be for your math-science kids. And my recommendation is that we do what Springford is doing, because it's brilliant and it's working. And that is to have 10th graders, have the math-science kids actually take the honors intensive course that we currently offer, although I would highly recommend that we add more nonfiction to that course than we currently do, and then Capstone in 10th and 11th. And then if they did get the credit in eighth grade, then they could either continue with Language Arts, or more likely, your math-science kids would take math-science in 12th grade and double up, or take a STEM class, because they would have already satisfied their core ELA. But even if the eighth grade course can't be a core course for legal reasons, then they still, then they would have to take another 12th grade English course. And again, it would be my recommendation that they, that it be suggested to them that they take AP comp, and that again, a greater emphasis on nonfiction would be put in that course as well, in order to reflect the real world in which our kids live. And I am done. So I would like to talk to the people I haven't spoken with about it, if you'll give me a few minutes of your time. I think this is an important matter that you have to decide, and, and there isn't a lot of time... lot of time to decide, because it's got to get into the course catalog by February-ish, or probably January, early January is the latest you could wait to do this. So, I thank everybody. Congratulations, Scott, Charles, Bob, Matt, Ashley. I fade into the background. Ta-ta.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Do we have any other public comment at this time? Okay.
Rick, don't fade too fast yet. I'd like to start with Diane. Diane Charco, please come up.
On behalf of the school board, and the high school, and middle school, and elementary administration, all of our directors, we appreciate your time and effort that you gave. Truly nong sang hyeong, we appreciate all your efforts. Thank you very much.
Rick?
On behalf of the Board of Directors, Administration, I want to thank you for the time that you spent, and I think tonight was just another example of your inside expertise that you have shared with us over the last four years, and will continue, I'm sure, to work with, and your thoughts, and you'll share with us, but something you'll, yes, I don't think so. But we appreciate your time and your talents and your efforts.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Again, thank you Diane and Rick for all your hard work and service. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move forward, and at this time, I will make a motion that we approve the monthly board action minutes from the school board meeting on November 14th. Motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Now we have the report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Matt. Tonight, we'd like to continue our discussion as we present to you tonight the middle school roof. We've been working on this for quite some time, really under the direction of our facilities and Mr. Lindgren, and we feel that tonight we wanted to, to bring Trumco Roofing to you to answer any specific questions you might have regarding this, this project. So, at this time, we'd like to, you know, really have the board ask, maybe Jeff and your Trumco representatives could come up along with Mr. Nestor. We'd like the board to have time, and maybe, Mr. Lindgren, if you'd like to have any introduction to this event, would be whatever you feel as far as the detail and the scope of work you'd like to share, and then we can move forward for a motion. Yeah, they will, if necessary. No, no, we'll keep it here. Yeah.
Well, thanks very much for coming out. I was talking about time already, and I think everybody knows that the middle school was constructed about 20 years ago, and the 20-year roof is coming to the end of its useful life. We have done the, much of the appropriate maintenance, but not all of it, so there are some additional things that need to be looked at besides just the roof, and how that's going to be done. The gentleman this evening, I'm going to talk to you about, the contracting method that we use. Basically, there's two types of contracting that are done commonly. One is called design, bid, build, and the third one is designed, or the second one is design, build. Design, bid, build is when you hire an architect, the architect puts together a set of drawings, they come and look at the building, they put together a set of drawings, you then issue it out as a bid, for contractors to come and tell you how much they think it's going to cost, and then you build it, okay? And at that point, you have sort of this three or four-headed monster. You have the owner, you have the engineer, the architect who designed it, you have the contractor, and sometimes you have somebody in the middle who's a construction manager. And all of those people have separate and divergent goals, all right? They have different things. The contractor wants to maximize his profit and minimize his time on it. The owner wants the best possible project and wants to sneak in change orders, you know, things that give you this for nothing. All these things work against each other. The other way that is commonly done is design, build, where basically, it's a two-party arrangement where we, the district, hire a combined architect, installer, who'll provide the roofing, the roofing installation, as well as the design and the design documents. So, it's all in one. And what that does is, there's not a lot of discussion as to who shot John. If something's not covered, it's their fault, we asked them to put the drawings together. If something's, you know, needs to be added or was missed, it's on them, okay? Because we've talked about what we want done, the things that we need done. There are some times, some things that are unforeseen conditions, and those are subject to change order, but in this case, you get away, you get away from a lot of that with this type of work. I think this is the hugely preferred way of doing this type of project, because, not to put too fine a point on it, it's not a terribly complicated job. We're going to be taking off the existing roof, we're going to be replacing it in kind. No, we're, yeah, ballots, never replacing it. In addition, we do have some other things that have to be done with maintenance, some work on the coping, some work on the fascia, some work with the expansion joints for the masonry, and those are the kinds of things that are going to be rolled into this project. So, I think between our conversations that we've had with the staff here and our conversations with the contractor, I think we're, we're well on our way to having a very successful project, and we want to get this done soonish so that we can get this under contract, so we can have this roof redone over the summer months, so we're ready to go for the fall. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, and do your presentation if you don't mind. Actually, I'm going to have Trumco take questions and answers. We have given all the board members the presentation, so if anyone likes to ask any questions on what our process is going to be, or the materials, or timing, or so forth, we're there to answer them.
Just to clarify, we had discussed at the committee about taking out the skylight, but I see it's still in this presentation, so has that been finalized, or do we have to decide here?
We'll, we'll decide as an entire board. Our committee, I think, came to a recommendation that we, we thought we could take that out, but it needs to be voted on and decided on by the entire board. There's the other issue as well with the wall.
We have to ask about $40,000 savings for that skylight, we asked at last meeting, about $40,000.
I kind of have a general question. I'd like to, like you to kind of summarize what apparently has been a lot of discussion that's going on behind the scenes. The existing roof has heavy stones on it, which you're aware is protection for wind loading. What, do you anticipate doing something similar, or what are you going to do for the wind? I know there's, I'm asking you to summarize hours of discussions in five minutes or less.
So, the existing system was actually a loose-laid membrane, and the ballast is in place to hold the system down. The reason the ballast is there is because otherwise, everything else will be loose and fall off. We, through, actually through the program, through different insurance carriers, particularly Factory Mutual, they do not accept that as a, as a proper method of holding a roof on. They will, they do not approve systems that have, that have that type of application. They will make exceptions for them in lower priority or lower wind zones, but it is not considered an approved, Factory Mutual approved attachment method, which the Co-op as a, as a design standard requires a Factory Mutual approved system.
Is this, is this a legacy system that in the early 90s, when the building was built, this was, this was Factory Mutual approved, or is...
No, in the early, in the, in the late 90s, when this was done, it would not have been Factory Mutual approved. Factory Mutual is not a standard that a school district has to follow, but as a, but most architects will use it as a, as a means of setting a standard of quality, and the Co-op that you're going through, that you're looking to go through, the KPN, requires Factory Mutual approved systems to be used as, as part of that. So that's, that's the reason we wouldn't be going back with that type of system.
Okay, okay.
So, the method we are looking to use is actually, you have an existing lightweight concrete deck system. We would be mechanically attaching a base sheet to that deck. We've performed fastener pull tests to verify that the, that the fasteners will hold in the existing deck, and the fastening pattern would be per an FM-approved, fastener density and fastening, fastening pattern. And then the roof membrane would be adhered to that base sheet.
So this is not a perimeter, this is throughout the...
Correct. Three-foot sheets laid across the entire roof, and those sheets would have fasteners in the, in the sheet, holding it down. And then the, actually waterproofing membrane would be adhered to that in hot asphalt.
Thank you.
Is that the same roof that's on the high school now?
Yes, it is similar to what's on the high school now, yes. The difference being the insulation, the existing insulation in the middle school is different than the insulation on the high school, but this, the actual membrane is the same, yes.
Like I said, we are aware of the, the high winds. We were involved in the blow-off of the auditorium about five or six years ago, and...
At the high school.
At the high school, there was a blow-off, and we were involved in the new roof and design of that new roof. So, this hot methodology that Ian spoke about is an FM-approved system, and it's performed very well.
Okay.
So I just have a general question. There's a few things in this plan that we're replacing or redoing. The comment was made, or the, the assessment was, that it was done wrong in the beginning, like the, the capstones around the edge of the building, the site wall at the chiller tower retaining moisture and all this. So, I guess my question is, were they, and I know it wasn't anybody, it wasn't any of us, but was it a design flaw, or was it us trying to do something on the cheap? Or was it just the best technology available at the time? I guess what I'm saying is, and the roof lasted 20 years, and that was the expected lifespan, but there's other things that have gone wrong, and, and I just want to make sure that we're doing the best possible thing this time, so that in 15 or 20 years, we're not talking about, well, this was done wrong, and we should have done better. So I'm, I'm just wondering, the, the things that are wrong now that we're going to fix, was it just because that was the best we could do, or did we make? You don't have to tell me, maybe Jeff wants to tell. I don't want to stick anybody in a bad spot, but I'm just...
I was actually going to gear towards the professionals who are in the roofing business there and coping things to verify, like, too, as well. I know from our walk of that, you guys made some suggestions on what took place previously at the school.
Majority of, the majority of the issues you're talking about, the coping, the three-wall flashings in the walls, was really an installation issue. So it was, it was the way that it was installed, it wasn't necessarily a bad design, if it had been installed properly. But the, the improper sized stones were used, which were probably not the design to have a stone that was smaller than the, than the wall itself, but at some point, that was, that was installed at the wrong size. And the interior flashings, we know that they're not working, we don't know exactly why, because they're inside the wall. So we know that we need to remove them and replace them because water's infiltrating through them, but we're not exactly sure. It's mostly, the flashing that's there should have worked. So again, it's most likely an installation error from the original construction.
And the site wall was more of an aesthetic type of design to hide the view of the chiller, but if you look at where the chiller's at and the location of the school, there's no one really to see, you know, the chiller's not a sore eye object, it's in the back of the school by the livery dock and other mechanical areas back there.
Okay, I mean, I guess, I know it was, it's probably a nebulous question, I just, my concern is, it's not, we're at 20 years now, and like, we all keep saying, it's a 20-year roof, but it was a problem long before 20, it hit 20 years. So we want the next one to go to the expected lifespan without us finding out that we did this wrong and that wrong. That's all I'm saying.
Absolutely. I did want to say, before we got to this point here, Trumco and facility staff walked the roof about five to six times, just revealing all the issues that was brought up by Casey B., pointed out to ensure that what's going to take place will correct those, those issues that are there now.
Okay.
Okay, one, one thing that we do have to decide on is that, one of the discussion items that was talked about was to replace the skylight in the, on the third floor, the third deck of the middle school, right outside of the auditorium doors there, between the auditorium and the gym, on the third deck, there's a skylight up there. And so, the last time the committee was together, I asked these gentlemen about the usual, the common, actually, I didn't ask it that way, I asked the opposite question. I asked if they'd ever seen one that had functioned, they said, yes, they had, once or twice. So, to rephrase, the common situation, is it common for skylights to leak?
Yes.
Okay. And I, I'm an engineer by training and by, by background, by everything that is inside me, I'm, I'm an engineer. So, what that means is, the aesthetics really are a secondary consideration for me. I think the skylight is very nice, and it's a pleasant feature, but I think it's an unnecessary, if I can call it that, a risk, an unnecessary cost that we, that we can save on, and I don't, I have to admit, my ignorance, I don't know how many people take advantage of the skylight there on the third floor outside of the auditorium back doors. So, the cost savings that you explained were $40,000?
About $40,000, yes.
Okay. Which is not, it's not nothing. Basically, what we would do is, we would take the sky, the existing skylight out, we'd put in new roof structure, and we'd put the new roof on top of that, and we would have to do something about lighting, because there, you know, it was counting on natural light in there. So, my, my recommendation, and I think the, the other members of the facilities committee agreed, was that we can do away with the existing skylight and replace it, but it's not our decision to make, it's our recommendation to make. So, we can vote on that, we can, I can, I can make a motion, and we can vote on that, if that's all right with the president?
Sure.
All right. I would like to make a motion that we delete the skylight and fill it in with roofing material, and have some provision made for, it may not be you all doing this, but some provision made for lighting in that space.
Second.
So a motion and a second to remove the skylight. Any questions or comments further? Great, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, no skylight.
And the, the other issue that came up, related, but different, was that, that wall that we were talking about. There's an existing wall that's outside. As you know, outside in your house, when you have your air conditioner out there, your condensing unit outside there, typically, you want it away from the wall, and you want nothing really around it, you don't want to put trees around it, because that cuts off the air movement. Knowing that, we still put a wall right next to our, our chiller. Granted, it's up higher, and so it's not really the same thing, but the principle is the same. And then we have some piping suspended from the wall. Basically, it is cantilevered off the wall, the protective or the, the site wall on the inside, so you can't see the piping from the outside of it, but there's no proper stands. And basically, we'd like to take, take that wall down to the minimum height that we could use, and then replace the cantilevered supports for the pipe with vertical stanchions, basically, separate footings. And that's, that's the short version of the story. Could you provide a little bit more detail, because I feel that might be as...
I think you explained a lot. So, it's a dual-purpose wall, it's a site wall and a retaining wall. The lower, the six-foot of it is retaining wall, we would like to hold on to about eight-foot of it, two feet would be a safety knee wall, so no one won't walk off of the upper terrain down. And then, as you mentioned, put the steel structures in to hold the existing pipe that's going to the chiller. So... So, um, roughly taking off, I would say, about eight feet of, eight to 10 feet of the existing site wall, to break it down to a retaining wall.
What's the diameter of the pipe?
Six, six to eight.
Okay.
Yeah, six to eight inches in diameter.
So you're looking at a fairly substantial bracing and probably cross-members?
Yeah, a couple, a couple of, of vertical supports on new concrete floors.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Can, can we go back briefly? Um, because I'm, I'm gonna enjoy something, because your discussion about skylights. In the early eighties, I built an addition to my house, and my dad and I were both engineers. And my wife wanted a skylight. And I want you to think back to the earlier discussion, hon, I was right.
Oh. You're off to a bad start.
It may be a tough ride, tough ride home tonight, but I was right. But yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to make mention, I know we're not showing this presentation tonight, um, but thank you for putting it together. It was informative. It, I mean, we've been hearing about it for a while, so most of the stuff we knew. But this is a nice way to, uh, condense it all. Specific pictures with, uh, specific items. And I just wanted to make it, I wanted to make everybody aware, this is available to the public if you go into the, the board meeting online. So you can see the pictures with the, uh, with the description of the problem and what, what the, what we're gonna do about it. There's a lot more than just the roof. I know, we're talking about the retaining wall and everything. There's a lot of things that weren't done right to begin with, and, and they're getting addressed with this project. So, um, if you want to go in there and see it slide by slide, it's, it's not a ton of information written like stereo instructions. It's easy to understand, but it's, it's available there. We, we just don't have it behind us tonight.
For the retaining wall, you're keeping six feet of it there for the retaining wall, and you're putting two feet above so people don't fall off. But maybe, since people coming from the other side may not be aware that it drops off there, maybe drop that two feet down a bit, and then put a railing that would not block, not obstruct any airflow at all. Just, that's more of a visual warning that, don't go this way, you'll fall. I mean, I don't know what the cost, I mean, just as an option, just that, you know, a little bit more of a warning for people.
Absolutely.
Especially because it's a middle school, and, you know, young teenagers who aren't necessarily putting two and two together, so.
And we could tie that in. It is a fence coming around to the retaining wall, so we could hook and tie it in all.
So now, I guess the, the third and the, the big thing was to approve the overall, the overall contract.
Quick question, Mr. President?
Sure.
Thank you. I know it's been a long time, we've been talking about this for a while, but given all the failures with this building, including the roof several years back, have we as a district exhausted all of our possibilities to recoup any of these costs in terms of, um, lawsuits or any actions against earlier contractors?
That's, yeah, probably not one for me to answer, but, Mr. Nester?
The, um, while, while the roof was warranted, uh, there was no roof failure. There were components surrounding the roof that failed, um, but those components failed after, um, the traditional warranty period of the work and, the installation work.
Also warranty period, they-
Uh, on a normal building, you have, uh, a year or two on most components of the building, uh, for warranties. For manufacturers, or installation warranties.
So there's no chance that we're gonna regain anything anywhere?
No. At, at this point in time, the roof has exceeded its, has, has met its life expectancy. Uh, it's been out of warranty for several years at this point. Uh, it just needs to be replaced.
So I think-
Ray, with the recommendation, Mr. Linger?
Yeah.
What I, what I wanted to do, Mr. Nester, um, if, if we could, um, I know we had some, some figures. Now it's minus the skylight, so-
Correct. So, so where we're at right now, uh, I just wanted to confirm with the, the folks from Tremco that the, uh, amount in the presentation for the, uh, wall of $65,000, uh, was the amount with the, uh, reduced scope of work. The, bringing the wall down to six or eight feet. Uh, so the only reduction to the overall would be four, would be a $40,000 reduction for the skylight, which would bring the overall, uh, not to exceed project cost, down to $2,502,100.
So demolish and rebuild the site walls, we just talked about, that's the, the, the scope that we just talked about, that's 65.5. Rebuild the existing one-inch control joint by the pedestrian bridge, uh, 14.6. Install new through-wall flashing at leak location near the cafeteria, 19.6. Uh, total for the additional building envelope by him says 99.7, and you take away 40, you come up with 59.7, yes?
No, the 40 is actually off the skylight, which is part of the deal.
Oh, the skylight's in the other, okay.
But it is, it is 40,000 off the 2.54.
Right, the 2.54 is the, the cumulative cost of both the roof and the, these components.
All right, so I make a two, and then if you go back the pages, we can see what's in the overall scope. The one-inch control joint, as it says, um, as you come in from the upper parking lot, across the bridge, there's a control joint right to the right of the building and the entrance, where the three-story structure meets the lower-story structure. And it moved more than they expected. We, we only allowed one inch, it wanted to move two inches. So it moved two inches, and it broke the brick. So we're going to cut out the brick, and we're going to replace it with a two-inch expansion joint. So that's what that is. There you go. Right. So basically, this is, these, the different items here, uh, took about almost, uh, $2.5 million for replacing the roof, a total replacement, um, including the chimney cap, capstones, uh, wall joint sealers above the roof line. Um, we have joints around the building. Essentially, we're gonna come from the top, from the roof, uh, the lower roof lines to the, to the upper roof line with those expansion joints, or replace those. Right. Right. Um, saw cut control joints at the corner of the gym. Replace the through-wall flashings at leak locations, and replacing existing, uh, but that's the one we're gonna delete. So there we are. So I just wanted everybody to kind of see what all the components were, and what we're talking about. If anybody has any questions about any of those in particular, we can answer those. And if there aren't, then I'll move right into a motion that we approve the contract, or letting the contract, or agreeing contract. Okay, doesn't seem as though there are. So I just want to get it right. Okay, we'd like to authorize the administration to contract with weatherproofing technologies, um, in the amount not to exceed, and we'll get the final number from you, but it's about $2.5 million, uh, for the roof replacement and the various building maintenance issues that we've agreed to tonight, uh, as presented. The contract is being made through the Keystone Purchasing Network program.
Second.
Thank you. I was gonna die there.
Yeah.
Stop when you're done.
So, do you have a number that you want to tell us?
The, the number is $2, $2,502,100, not, not to exceed.
Twenty-five oh-two-one, okay. All right, so with that in mind, do we have any additional questions or comments before we proceed with the vote?
Just one last question. I'm, this is, this is all new to me. I'm not do, I don't do commercial work. But residential work on roofs is generally a cost plus, because you have to add to tear off before you know how bad the damage underneath is. Uh, is this a firm contract, or what happens if we find you do the tear off and you discover there's additional work?
No, this, this is a not to exceed price, so we are, we are, we have contingencies built in here. We don't expect, uh, based on, based on the investigation we've done, we don't expect much of any deterioration, but there are contingencies built in this contract.
Because there's a lot of people here who own their, own houses, and I'm sure I'm not the only one who's familiar with cost-plus tear off, because we don't know how many rotted boards we're gonna find. And literally, that's the kind of thing residential roofing comes, you find with residential roofing. Okay. Sorry for the questions.
Basically, one of the reasons we chose this method of contracting as well, is because you can get this not to exceed. In addition, they, they did do pull-out tests.
Mm-hmm.
They checked the, the status of the roof to their satisfaction, so they could give us a not to exceed price. And they performed the tests, uh, so that they were sure the system they were gonna give us was going to work.
Yeah, I'm coming late to the party.
I do, a question on the, uh, date. The completion date is on before August 24th, 2017. Ooh, is this 2017? Okay. Actually, we updated that after the last-
Yeah, we updated it after the last committee meeting. Apparently, the updated version didn't get, uh-
I was wondering, I was thinking that was pretty optimistic, like, what happens if you go past that point? Just thought I'd ask, but, okay, that makes much more sense.
Yeah, there are two 17, 2017 dates that should have been corrected, but they may be still in there.
Okay, anybody else? So all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thanks for the work, Bob.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Linger and your team. Uh, I think it was, um, obviously very well thought out, and I appreciate the, uh, collaboration, obviously, between not only the, uh, your team, but the entire board. And, uh, obviously, you know, bringing our new members up to speed with Q and A, so, thank you, appreciate it. Moving on to action items for, uh, personnel. We'd like to start with, uh, 7.1. We ask that, uh, this, uh, the board approves and granting tenure as submitted.
So moved? Any questions or comments on 7.1? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Motion passes.
I make a motion to combine 7.2 to 7.6, if that's okay with Dr. Schur.
That is okay, thank you.
Motion and a second to approve 7.2 through 7.6. Any questions or comments?
Just noting that, uh, we will be accepting, uh, the resignation letter of Mr. Penny Packer with regret. Deep regret.
Agreed. And, uh, so for anybody that's not, uh, looking at the agenda, um, it is, Coach Penny Packer's resignation from, as high school football coach and, uh, intramural weight training coach. Effective, uh, November for weight training and, and January for, for football. And, yes, with great regret, but, um, hopefully, it's a less stressful, uh, next few months for Coach Penny Packer, and, and he doesn't have too much regrets, just great memories. So thank you to Coach Penny Packer, and I'm sure we'll be seeing him, uh, here soon. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Okay.
Moving on to 7.7 miscellaneous, the Act 93 administrative salaries. Uh, we ask that you approve the Act 93 administrative salaries effective December 1st, as presented.
So moved?
Can we take out, uh, the building administrators' salaries from the discussion and vote, discuss and vote, separate those?
I-
Principals and assistant principals.
I think we, I mean, I think we can still make the comments with-
Well, I have questions regarding, uh-
Okay, I'll come in here, and then if we need to split them out, we can. Just looking at, uh, is this, I forget where we're at. Are we at the comment time?
We did, we did-
I don't know, okay.
So, second, and then you can comment. Okay.
Um, last year's SPP scores, um, three of our five buildings, um, of course, all five, you know, would be great to see improvement in the SPP scores, but three of the five, uh, were in the yellow, whatever the state calls that, um, under the 70, uh, cutoff level. This year, not only did we not go up in all but one of the buildings, we went down. Uh, SPP score representing, um, really the, the, the grade, I guess, the state gives our buildings. So I'm not sure, and looking to Mark to cut me off if, if need be, but, uh, because I see the salaries are a public comment. I don't know, and I don't recall, uh, if this reflects raises, and if so, I'm kind of concerned about, uh, voting for raises when, uh, the SPP scores are what they are. That's, that's my concern.
We should clearly not discuss any individual's performance publicly. Now, Bill can certainly answer the question, does it encompass raises? So, you know, that's, that's a question we can answer.
Well, the Effective Educator Act of 1982, uh, was designed, uh, with the SPP in mind, uh, to really, uh, affect the teachers' ratings. It was for, it wasn't really for school performance. It was for, it was for teacher ratings. And, um, so, so just keep that in mind. It ha, it's morphed into more, more than that. So, so along with that, the, the act, this, this particular act, um, we, uh, the Effective Educator Act, there's a formula that's used. So all the formulas, uh, are factored in to the evaluation that's based on the Act 93 agreement that was, that was board-approved. So all these administrators, through the Act 93 agreement, through the Effective Educator Act of 1982, and the, and the rubric, all met the, the performance standards.
Contract, is that what you-
That's correct, and of, and of the SPP, and that's factored in the SPP. So there's many, there's many, there's many factors. There, there's the, uh, there's the, the goal piece that they have to meet, which is like the teacher observation piece, that the supervision piece. Uh, there's an SLO, which is, uh, their student, there's learning objectives that they each have to do. They also, also have to have, um, knowledge of correlation data, which would be the things that we discuss at curriculum committee all the time. How, how the, how teacher performance, the MAP data, PSSA data, they have to be able to correlate all that, that, all that particular information. That's all factored in, and SPP, those things are all combined, and that's how the rating, the rating is, uh, comes up with. So we factor that in, we take all of our data, factor it in to the 82.1, which we're obligated to, 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 uh, to use. It's because it's a law. The, the Effective Educator Act is a law for our teachers and for administrators, and we're obligated to use that particular rubric and rate, rate our administrators accordingly, as we are teachers.
So am I understanding you correctly that the SPP score, the grade on their, on-
Was factored into this evaluation. By law.
Okay. So we have no say in really whether, uh, we can't really say, oh, look at this SPP score, uh, you know, they shouldn't get a raise. That's out of our hand for the contract.
It's, it's, it's out of, it's out of, it's, it's, it's an Act 93 agreement at this point. That would have to be renegotiated. That, that particular point would have to be renegotiated. But there's many factors, you know, Mr. Parker, as you know, there's many factors that go into the, uh, rating. Uh, and I don't think we would want to, just like, I don't think we would want to be held to one particular standard. I would think we would, you know, we've worked so hard at Potsboro to have multiple assessments, so that we can get a really true picture of how well we're doing. Uh, and, uh, I- how well we're doing. And I think that those are the kind of, there's multiple assessment pieces are something we have to continue to, to look at. But I think that would be something, that would be a whole board discussion, in my opinion. If, if, if you're going to draw a line in the sand like that, then, then it's a meeting, we'd have to meet and discuss that moving forward in our next agreement.
Right.
At this point, is it, that when the Act 93 comes up, that we address Bill's concerns, and he can have a look at it then, and the board will discuss it?
Right.
Yeah. And I just, just, I agree with what you're saying in regards, you're, the last point you're making in regards to, we want to look at, just like our student data, we want to look at the whole picture. But I'm just considering the fact that SPP in itself is, they get that score by looking at a number of factors, so...
And that, and that will change, Mr. Parker, you know.
Yeah.
The, you know, that, the new piece, you know, out is, is coming. Actually, actually, I say that the word on the street, I use that loosely, but we're, we're supposed to get a new, new performance profile rating along with this, this year. So, it'll be interesting to see what the, you know, how the old looks with, with, with the new as, as well. But if, if, if you're sitting here, and I, I'll, I'll speak for, for, for my team, if you think anybody's happy with a, a, a number under 70, or not being in the green, or not being in blue, or not being, you know, they're not, you know. And that's why, that's why we're working hard at multiple levels with curriculum and instruction. You know, we're working on increasing our enrollments, the AP piece, we're working at multiple disciplinary things at the, at our, at our economic disadvantage level. Like, we're, we're covering our bases. We just, we need time to implement our curriculum and, and continue to just move forward with the things we have. And I think, you know, I feel, I feel, you know, I feel good about what, what could be, you know. And this, maybe the next year, this time, we're talking about celebrating it, you know, versus being concerned about it.
I, I hear that, and I appreciate that. It's just, I'm, I'm coming back to, this board has transformed into a board, and I say that in a positive manner, that likes to be data-based, including in regards to, you know, evaluations and assessments and, and that sort of thing. So, based on the data that we have, I, I struggle with this, but based on Mark's remarks and the regards to this being contract-based, I will reluctantly vote yes in this case, but I would ask that we relook at this when the contract comes up.
So, are we back to okay to leave them combined? All right. So, we have a motion and a second for the approval of 7.7, which is the Act 93 administrative salaries. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, John. You can, okay. Opposed? Okay, the motion passes.
Thank you. Percentages, please. Average percentage of raise, highest individual percentage of raise, lowest individual percentage of raise. Did anyone not get a raise?
I could give that to you, if that, if that works for you, after the fact. Yeah. Thank you. Moving on to action items for business. Payment of the bills for December of 2017. Our recommendation is you authorize Mr. Nestor to pay the bills for the month of December 2017.
New board members, this is because we're only meeting early in the month. We need to pay our bills, and this is something we've done here as long as I can remember, and I won't tell you how long that is.
Second. Motion and a second for 8.1. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Okay.
8.2, replacement of the chiller at West, West Pots Grove Elementary. Our recommendation is to authorize administration to enter into a contract with Tozer Train Incorporated for the replacement of the existing 140-pound chiller with the new...
140-ton.
Ton, ton, sorry. Ton chiller, the new train package, 140-ton chiller, at a cost not to exceed $160,000.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? And I know that we've spoken about this at length, but does anybody need clarification before we move forward on this? Okay, all in favor? Aye? Opposed?
Moving on to action items for education. Conference attendance.
Please combine items 9, 1, 2, 3.
Thank you.
A second. We have a motion to combine 9.1 through 9.3. Any questions or comments on conference attendance? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Okay.
Okay, moving on to committee reports. We have a, the athletics and co-curricular committee.
Matt, it's okay if I do athletics? For athletics, when we were doing the athletic meeting, we had four topics that we discussed. The first topic was the possible change to Board Policy 227. This covers the controlled substance part of the policy and co-curricular and such. The issue that was presented to us was that unfortunately, we do not receive any credible information anymore as in to, we used to get the information from the police department as in to, if something were to happen from one of our students while not on the premises, but at different parties and such. Unfortunately, due to many different changes over the years, that is no longer given to us. So, we'd like to send that back, since it's really a policy that we cannot control at this particular time, we want to send it back to the policy meet, committee to revise as common language for today's times. The second part was, we discussed again, and we expect that we'll be beginning in the spring of 2018, charging for the use of the turf field for the participants, the... When people come to watch the events and such like that, we never charged for the turf field. They would just come for the different events. Unfortunately, as we said before, the, we're losing tons and tons of money. Obviously, you have all the referees and different things like that, and we always charge for the football field, but we never actually charge for some of the other fields. Starting in the spring, we're going to charge five, five dollars for the adults, three dollars for the students. Third thing was, okay, now this one is going to be a little bit of a, of a board, full board, as in, it was presented to us, and we'll come to the full board as in to introduce two middle school teams, court, you know, co-curricular. You're talking about the girls volleyball, bringing girls' volleyball and middle school boys' lacrosse, which we do not have. Obviously, we like to have more of a feeder program to our boys' lacrosse and obviously, our new girls' volleyball. We don't have that feeder program right now, so the possibility of bringing that to the middle school starting next year would be something we would like the board to consider. And lastly, and we have no end on this one as of right now, is if the board was not aware, the YMCA is going to close as of July, I believe.
Fully closed.
Fully closed. That displaces our swim team. We do not have a pool here, obviously, and we do not have a place for our swim team to go and practice or compete. So, we do have, Gary Durenzo, our athletic director, is trying to get anybody that's in the immediate area to try to see if we can find a place for our swim team. That hasn't been successful as of yet, but we're still trying. Obviously, we have a little bit of time, but this is our last year to have an actual facility. That's something the board may want to just understand and know about. All right? And that was it, just those four things.
Thank you, Mr. Leach. Just an update. Next week, I'll be meeting with the YMCA and their, their staff and other local administrators to see, get more of an in-depth view of, of where they're heading in particular. I mean, their, their, their conversation with me was a why without walls. It'll be interesting to see how that vision pans out. I'm, I'm glad that they asked me to be part of it, actually, to see how that will work out in our community. I know that they've, the services that we offer before and after school have not, will not be affected. So, that's a good thing for our, for our community. But I will update the board as, as we move forward on this to see what it means for us, you know, down the road. So, thank you. Moving to the Curriculum Technology Student Affairs Committee, we have a report.
At the last meeting on November 28th, we lightly touched on the SPP scores, mainly because we'd gone over them the meeting before and at the board meeting. Spent a little bit of time on PVS, which is the Pennsylvania Value Added Assessment System. We were, went over the information that the state gave to us, and then it was explained that that information is then being passed on to the building administrators, who in turn speak to different teams within their buildings, as well as individual teacher, individual teachers as need be, to basically promote growth of the students. More time was spent with MAP, which is the Measures of Academic Progress. As for the parents, they should have been receiving those reports from the students that took it in the fall, either this week or the last few days. MAP is going to grades two to eight currently, and then in the winter, we'll be starting up with grades nine and 10. And something to note is that even though the SPP scores and the PVS have a sort of if-yet times with our students, the MAP showed that for Pots Grove students, all grades two through eight, for both math and ELA, we exceeded the norms for the country. And that's against 26 million-plus students. So, obviously, we're doing something right. The, it was also then shown to us that we have, the teachers are given reports where they can then dial down to individual students to help those that are in need of certain areas, actually, to even specific areas of study, and then also to look at it as, the classrooms as a group, and be able to work at all levels, both the students at the very low end, high end, and in between, to make sure that there's growth across all different levels. We went on to curriculum renewal process. This year, they're doing science, world languages, visual arts, and health. Last year, we did ELA and math, as you're aware. That process just began November 7th, and going through different groups right now, going through what they must have in the different curriculum that they're looking at, and with the idea being that in February, at the curriculum meeting, they'll be bringing to us their recommendations for where they would like to proceed. Now, the problem we spent the most time was on the AP capstone, which, I don't know if Rick's still here, was brought up. The AP capstone, if you didn't catch it from what he said, is a two-year program. First year is on a seminar, the second is on research. And the idea being that any student in the high school will be able to take it if, as an elective, ELA elective, but for those students that have taken AP Language, AP Comp, and passed them within 80%, can then take it as a core class. That's the seminar. And then, if you pass the seminar, you can take the research. And if you get the AP seminar with a three or higher in that AP exam, or an 80% in the class, you can take the AP research as a core class for ELA. The, the whole idea is that we're going to be discussing this, bringing it to the board the first week of, first meeting of January, with the hopes that by the second meeting in January, we'll actually be able to vote on it. I'm sure Rick will be contacting many of you to give his views. There, it is a very good program. You know, the whole idea is about teaching students to take information. There can be, in the seminar section, there's going to be writing for two different sections that will be tested on writing by the AP people, and then the teacher will also be grading them on a group multimedia presentation, as well as group defense other multimedia presentation, and then going to an individual multimedia presentation and an oral defense of that for the individual. So, it's very, it's a very intensive class, and the idea being that will prep them for the second year, which will be for research, where they can research whatever their heart desires, but they will have to do it at a college grade, college level. And then, there was also discussion that this is a really great idea. Let's see what we can do about bringing it so that every student, whether it be AP or not, there might be some option for them to do a seminar and a research so that when they go into, whether it be college or to the workforce, they're ready for working in teams and being able to research. The last bit was on the, the digital learning environment. Dr. Ramage spoke to us about, on November 7th, the teachers that are working with the challenge-based learning were invited down to King of Prussia for an inaugural event by the Apple Store, which was to learn more about the iBooks Author Software. And then, he also spoke about November 8th, we had the distinguished program showcase that happened, occurred here at Pots Grove, where 17 educators from all over the state came to Pots Grove to learn how we were working with the digital learning environment. And it went so well that there's already plans for a second and larger one. So, that's where we were with curriculum, technology, and student affairs.
Thank you, Mr. Lappett. We'd now like to move to an action item. We'd like the board to accept the minutes for the Curriculum and Technology Student Affairs Committee meeting held on October 17th as submitted.
A motion to combine 10-3 and 10-4 to accept the meeting of the Curriculum Committee and the Ops Committee, Ops and Facilities Committee.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second for 10-3 and 10-4 to accept those minutes. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Okay. We're on to new business now. Does, does anybody have new business at this time? Okay, I was gonna save mine for last, so I'll go first, since nobody has any. But first and last, that's right. So, I just wanted to bring up with the board an issue from a few weeks ago, and I'll leave some details out because it's, it's, I guess it's the, the issue of what, what occurred. So, and this is to do with CMD. I observed a car violating the, a stopped school bus with its lights and its stop sign out in front of my house. I contacted the Lower Pots Grove Police Department because I did get the description of the car, the driver, and the license plate. They told me that, the officer responded, called me back promptly, was very helpful, and, but he informed me that a citizen, excuse me, a citizen at large can't make, officially make that report. The bus driver has to corroborate the report and, and make the report themselves. But he got the report started, he took the information. The next day, I provided the information to the bus driver. They took the information, they said, you know, she did, the bus driver laid on the horn when it happened, et cetera. So, and this happens often in front of my house with, with all three buses, because I have an, an elementary, a middle school, and a high school bus, all that stop in front of my house. Provided the information, told the driver what I had spoken to the officer about. I followed up with an email to Dr. Shirk and Chief Foltz at Lower Pots Grove with the question, okay, this is the information I got from Lower Pots Grove, this is what I did, what can we do? We need to tell, we need to take action. This is a problem. We've talked about it for, for months now, and we've been working on it with CMD. Chief Foltz confirmed to me what the officer told me. But he also let me know that the officer did reach out to the bus company and requested the information, to which the driver responded. I don't really remember. There was, that happened so often, how am I to remember? But I did have a specific conversation with that driver. And the reason I'm bringing it up here, which I usually would not, is that we have been over this time and again. We had CMD here, and, and they chose not to speak the last time they were here, but I think that they need to be here. That's just my opinion. I don't know why this is not able to be handled, but this is, this is a situation where we did everything we could. It just happened to be me, it could be any parent, did everything I could, I took every step I could, and nothing gets done. So, that, my intersection is particularly bad. People are texting all the time, and they don't like to stop for the school buses because they might miss the light at High Street. So, the thing is, they, they run through the school bus stoplights, and the traffic's backed up there anyway. That's how I get the license plate number so easily, because I just have to walk up to the curb. So...
Spin that right out.
Right. They're already stopped while the bus driver's still laying on the horn. That said, I know that we had some feedback last year from a bus driver who said that they did try to do the right thing. They reported it to the police, and they ended up taking three days of their time sitting in court for some, for a driver who never showed up, and the thing kept getting continued. So, I, I mean, if it's a huge issue for the bus drivers to take action, that's a problem too. But again, here we are. It's happening. We have all the information we need short of a police officer sitting there, and if a police officer's sitting there, they're not... going to do it, they'll do it the next day, when he's not there anymore. So what do we do? So that's my question, is what do we do? I think we have an issue, but at the very least, we have to have some kind of agreement with CMD that they're going to follow through. I don't know if we look at other options, you know, I know that there's, there's, there's options for cameras that, that snap pictures, if that, you know, when the bus, when the, the arm goes out, there's a camera that activates, and if somebody drives by, a picture gets snapped. I don't know, I don't know if that's the figment of my imagination or not, but there's got to be something else we can do, and if, if it's even a, a small investment, personally, I'd be in support of that, but we have to do something. I've seen kids almost get hit multiple times just in front of my house, so, anyway, I wanted to bring that to the attention of the full board, because I'd like us to all support getting something done about this.
Right, I mean, I'm sorry, you asked me or...
Oh, no, Bill had...
Oh, I misunderstood, I'm sorry.
I don't recall that issue last year, but that, that would be a concern, and I could see that making drivers hesitant to do anything, three days, they had to be in court, and the company who's having trouble getting subs and so forth as it is. Could this be something that Bill could sit with the chiefs and Judge Palladino, I imagine it's in district court if it's a ticket, and say, hey, what, what, help us out here, what can we do? You know, whether it be a video conference, if they have to have the driver there, or whatever, something, is that something we could reach out, if the, if the issue is potentially because of what's happening in district court, I wonder if we could reach out to that judge, well, judges, we have two judges in our area, and start there, if that's what's causing the drivers to...
I would have CMD come in, do a mini-me, Rob, or wherever you choose, and, and I certainly understand and, and not only sympathetic, but empath, empathetic sometimes about sitting in a courthouse, but having said that, in my experience with this kind of level, this three-day continuance thing, I, I, my experience is that would have been an aberration at the district court level. You know, they, they don't normally get continued, and so I would get a conversation with the bus company. If that's the issue, then certainly, I agree, Bill, maybe we could have some discussion with the police department and make sure these are scheduled and the police officer's there, but again, at the district court level, the vast majority of the time is that that's time certain and usually goes off. It's not like, you know, I don't mean this to be deprecating anybody, where you get to Newarkstown on a criminal case, continued, continued, I have not had that experience at this level. So let's start with the meeting with the bus company and see really, quote, what the problem is.
And I think Mr. Alexander alluded to, I mean, the Lower Pots Grove Police Department, Chief Foltz specifically, was very supportive, and he, he was, he was on it, I mean, until he, he found an answer, so I would agree that CMD's the place to start, and I'll work with Mr. Nestor to, to get that set up.
Yeah, I mean, I, I definitely got the impression from Chief Foltz that he's here for us, whatever, whatever he can do and whatever he needs to do, so, and I do appreciate that.
Are we able to find out recording devices would be, you know, would hold up and wall for something like that? Does it mean, you know...
I imagine there's a way to do it, because they certainly do it with traffic lights, but that is a Commonwealth, so maybe you can't do it on a private basis, but we can talk to the chief about that.
I think we just got an email or something about, from the middle school robotics team with some awesome invention they came up with, so I turned to Jim and said, well, maybe we can get them to invent something that, like you described, you know, get some coming in.
That is part of the Lego robotics competition, is that they have to invent something that, that is a, you know, benefit to, solves a problem in, in our world, so.
Before we move out of new business, I just wanted to take, take a moment, I know we did this district-wide, but I wanted to let the board know and the community know that Yolanda Williams is now Dr. Yolanda Williams, and so we wanted to congratulate her. So we just wanted to, again, you know, recognize her publicly for her efforts and her perseverance to get through that, as we, as we move forward, so congratulations again, Yolanda, on your Moving on to answers to previous questions, I don't know if the board would like me to read through that, but obviously, we, we, we answered, Mrs. Custer had a question regarding the senior class trip, we did look into that, as well as the, the High School Spirit Week. Does the board need any more information on those, those two topics?
I had just a quick question on that, as in to, do you know what the hotel's name was?
I don't, maybe Dr. Ziegler does, or...
It was an All-Star. It was an All-Star.
Oh, it's the All-Star Resort?
Yeah.
That's on Disney.
But it changed, is that...
They're going to the Disney All-Star.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. If everybody's okay then with answers to previous questions, we can move forward to public comment. Public comment at this time, anything non-agenda related that came up or agenda-related, since we're at the end. Do we have any more public comment at this time requests? We'll, we'll adjourn the meeting at this time, thanks, everybody. So at this time, we have a, an opportunity for any further public comment, do we have any additional public comment? Sure, no, come on up.